June 22, 2023 Planning Board Public Session. I'd like to call to order, and in the absence of the Secretary, I'll call the roll. Chair LaFara was here, Vice Chair Finity is here on Zoom. Gloria Burke Secretary is absent, Craig Conatlanato was absent, George Mutu,
Present.
Tom Neely,
Present.
Kate Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its strength, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Just a note on procedure. In case of an emergency, exit either of those rear doors, down the stairs through the front door. That is the the plan. And do I have sign in sheets, Jeff, for people who are speaking?
It's up there before you.
Can I have it?
There was nobody out front.
No, I put in there four that to sign in.
So no one signed in prior?
They just walked in the door.
No sheets.
All right, so because we don't have a pre-signed in sheet, I'm going to ask for whoever wants to speak, and each person can go up. Give us your name, your affiliation, and fill out the form.
Is that prior to each category? So we wait for our category to come up?
Yes, yes, whatever application. We're going to start with number one, which is 917 West Main. Do we have notice, Council?
Yes, Madam Chair.
We have notice, and so we'll read it into the record.
Do that. Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled 917 West Main LLC. The site plan special exception application is for the construction of a 6,000-square-foot building and associated parking for special trade contractor uses on a 50,786-square-foot parcel located within the LI-40 zoning district, Hamlet of Spion, Suffolk County Tax Map Number
Okay. Now, who is here to represent the application for 917?
Taffia Bland.
Okay, if you could just clear the podium, you can sign that in when you... And if you would, just hand that to me. Thank you, Kate.
The member has been signing randomly, I'm not sure.
Is that working? Thanks, Kate. Okay, so please give us an overview of the application.
Sure. So my name is Andrew Graham, the applicant on the application.
Can you just speak up? This is not a amplified. An amplified mic. It's only for the TV.
Okay.
So just speak as loud as you can.
Sure. So my name is Andrew Graham, I'm the applicant on the application. It's a 6,000-square-foot warehouse, four bays. Basically, they live in a room with a bathroom in it. We have, you know, we've gone for the pre-submission, and we did our best to address the comments that were referred to us from the pre-submission hearing. And we also went for a variance as well, for the positioning of the building on the lot, for the 20-foot area yard setback. It's a special exception, you know, specially used trade contractor, or special trade contractor. And there's a number of other lots in this industrial park with a special trade contractor, as well as other special exception uses, such as prepared garage. So, so, yeah, we're open to questions from the board. I think we've done our best to address the pre-submission comments and any other concerns that were raised.
So your entrance is off wind mirror?
Yes.
Can you show the aerial, Jeff?
Special trade contractor.
Okay. Yeah.
So the parking meets all of all the requirements? I know parking has been an issue on that street.
Yeah, it's tight in there, but we need we need 21 spots total, and that's what we already have with the... Some of the parking comes from the bays within the building, but it's our understanding that's permitted, so so we are meeting the parking requirements.
How many bays do you have?
I'll double check before.
I think you said four.
I believe I said four. It is it is four, or three bays, rather. Sorry about that.
Three bays, so that's three parking spaces, right?
I believe we got more than three as a result of the depth of the bays. We'll double check on the survey. Yeah, so we got four interior stalls.
Four?
Yeah.
And then you can accommodate the balance of the parking on the site?
Yes. There's a small area for outdoor storage as well.
Outdoor storage.
Jeff, can you switch back to the site plan, please?
What outdoor storage are you contemplating?
It's, if you look at the site plan, you see the corner with beyond the natural buffer, just across in the building, it's that small area, just across in the building, up against the buffer there.
Okay, I mean, if it's anything like lumber or gardening, there's no outdoor display allowed, no outdoor storage, so.
Display or?
They were the outdoor storage.
Okay. Okay.
What type of items would it be?
So there are tent companies that store some lumber for their for their tents. Let's say they do large condition tents for events and things of that nature, so.
Okay, so there is an outdoor stor...
Yeah, so it was actually in the pre-submission comments that we that it was it was requested of us, just because of the nature of these special trade contractor buildings, they wanted it in a confined area rather than it not being addressed now and being an issue later.
Well, we'll discuss it when we get the site plan, yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Dennis, any question? Anyone from the public would like to address this? This is not... This is just special exception site plan. This is not pre-submission. Okay, so a 10-day written comment period? George? Second by?
I'll second.
Kate? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five in favor, two absent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The second is Blessing Fields.
Where does proper notice, Madam Chair?
Great, thank you.
Kate, you have the top one?
I have the top one. This one here.
Please take notice.
Okay. Please take notice, and in accordance with Local Law 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled Blessing Fields LLC. The site plan special exception application proposes construction of one two-story, 2,180 square foot to be utilized for two offices uses and one two-story, 4,000-square-foot building to be utilized for two special trade contractor uses, with associated parking and cross-access along the southern portion of the property, serving the properties to the east and west, all on a 49,554-square-foot parcel located within the HB zoning district at 163 West Montauk Highway, Hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-222-1-12.
It's all yours. Give us an overview, please.
Michael Shiano from InterSight, and Chief Associate Associate on behalf of the applicant. I also have Wayne Bruin here, the counsel for the applicant in the audience, as well as Sabrina Kelly from my office. I know we have everything up there, but just to kind of point around what's proposed here, just give me one second. So this property located at 163 West Montauk Highway is it has a lot area of 49,554 square feet in the highway business zoning district. The existing property, this is the proposed conditions area, but the existing property has a single one-story frame building located in the front of the site and a two-story garage with some concrete pads and trailers around the site. That's the existing one-story building.
Do we have that plan out? This is Lexon McDonald's.
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant proposes to demolish the existing structures and redevelop the site with two buildings. One is has a footprint of 21 of 2,180 square feet. That's the, yeah, which is going to be located towards the front of the site, which will be used as offices. And the other is a building with a 4,000-square-foot footprint for special trade contractor use and garage bays for the special trade contractors. The office building will have a total GFA of about 5,160 square feet of actual finished space. Then the interior will also consist of 160 square feet of storage, 85 square feet of mechanical space, and 935 feet of unfinished space. The special trade contractor building will have a 4,000-square-foot first floor and 2,000 square feet of loft area above that. The applicant proposes to install drywalls on the site where there's no current drainage available, and a new septic system is proposed, new water service and gas service is proposed. Currently, the site plan shows 54 parking spaces and three handicap spaces. This particular site abuts the highway business zoning district, abuts the R-20 district. The district line runs through the railroad property to the south. And as a result, we have a proposed transitional yard of, let's see what the, of about 1,276 square feet. We also are proposing a 20-foot-wide cross-access easement, along with 13-foot-wide proposed road expansion, which is in connection with the recommendations from the 2010 Hampton Bays Corridor Strategic Plan, which was a proposal to included recommendations to extend Good Ground Road. So that was part of one of the recommendations that was included in the pre-submission conference report. Just to remind the board, because this was a while ago, the application had come before this board as a pre-submission conference in July, on July 9 of 2020, and your pre-submission report was issued on August 27, 2020. And then it was later revised, I think with some corrections and some additional details, on November 12, 2020. Then this application went to the Zoning Board of Appeals after all of the stuff that was going on in 2020, 2021. We had an application for the ZBA submitted on January 31, 2022. There were a number of public hearings associated with that, just to kind of work through things with both the zoning board, and there were questions that came up with the planning board and kind of the design of these buildings. From the original design, the some of the buildings were moved slightly away from the eastern, I'm sorry, the western property line, and made a little bit smaller in order to reduce the amount of pyramid compliance that was necessary. So because the lot is so narrow, at the end of the day, we did wind up getting a zoning variance on September 15, 2022, for 2,996 cubic feet for the front building. And it sounds like a lot, however, because of the long, narrow nature of this building, the rear building required 12,000 cubic feet of variance, but it's kind of in kind, in liking kind to what Riverhead Building Supply has next door, and also the fact that it's in a highway business zone. So in narrow lots like this, that kind of pyramid is kind of seen in a lot of different properties and locations in this area.
Can excuse me, can you tell us the variances that you got?
Oh, yes. One was for, it was all for pyramid compliance. For the front building, we got 2,996 cubic feet of pyramid relief. Yes, it's right up there, I'm sorry. And then for the building to the rear, the special trade contractor, next page, there we go. It was 12,000 cubic feet of pyramid.
So it was just pyramid relief?
It was just pyramid relief, correct. As part of the discussion in between, before the zoning board made their decision, this matter came before you and also the Architectural Review Board to discuss kind of the look of the building, to make sure that it was a little bit more residential in appeal, and so that you could also review it in terms of seeker. And a seeker neg deck was issued on August 11, 2022. One of the main changes that was made was originally the architectural style of the front of this building was a little bit more commercial and industrial, and we added some of these kind of residential elements in the front to to make it look a little bit more appealing from the from the street. And you can also see that there's still going to be a good amount of screening on the, that's the northwest side, on these two renderings on the left side there. And our Health Department application is still pending. We initially had submitted an application in 2020, at the end of 2020, and we haven't resubmitted back to them because they didn't have an issue with anything that was proposed. They were just kind of waiting for the seeker determination, zoning board, and planning board decision before moving forward. So once we work through stuff with this board, we will resubmit those plans back to them. We are currently working to, we know that there were a number of comments from the Fire Marshal and the Town Engineer about details of access from the street and other details about the site. We're working through those and will have some of those decisions, some of those changes back before the next work session. Note that all of the adjacent properties are either commercially developed, except for the rear side, which is the Long Island Railroad, and we'll be making sure to screen the southern part of the property, so that we're not going to disturb the residential neighborhood to the south. I'm here to answer any questions.
Mike, is audio on?
Yes, it is.
Okay, one of the unique attributes of this site is that if you can go to the aerial depth, it's perfectly aligned with the signal signalization of the Macy Shopping Center. So a key component here is that there's the cross-access to allow vehicles to utilize that signalization. I don't know, Jeff, do you have the ability to get the aerial back up?
Yeah.
Or not?
He has it up.
It's up.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it is completely aligned with the
With the signal.
entrance of Macy Shopping Center. So Mike, could you maybe expand on the cross-access in the back, specifically to the Riverhead Building site directly west of the site?
Yeah, we have a proposed cross-access easement in, I do not believe that cross-access, Riverhead Building Supply was improved before the planning board started to really require that on kind of a wholesale basis. However, we are proposing it if slash when the town activates the need for cross-access, so that it will be easier for people to access these commercial and these commercial sites in the future.
Okay, so essentially, Riverhead Building Supply, there are lumber trucks, many of us have seen on the road, they're large, we envision going through the cross-access to the rear of this site, then exiting your site in order to make a left-hand turn, you know, a westbound turn onto Montauk Highway. Is your is your intersection at Montauk Highway sufficient to accommodate one of these large lumber trucks and along with a vehicle maybe trying to enter the site? Is there a wide enough radius?
It's a good question. We'll note it. We are looking at it from a from the ability for emergency vehicles and fire trucks to be able to turn around and access, to turn around in the rear part of this property. So in order to accommodate those for left and right turns out of the site, I'm, I believe that it's probably going to be also able to accommodate those such trucks, but it's something that we'll look into as part of the discussion during the work session.
Well, the right-hand turn is going to be made directly from the RBS site heading east. I'm more concerned about
Left turn.
When they have deliveries to the west, they're going to, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn out of that RBS site. I have first-hand knowledge of that. So you really want to look at that intersection, make sure that there's a wide enough glare to allow, you know, a left-hand turn for a large lumber truck to head west. And also, of course, we have to think about access to the east. There again, to utilize that intersection, that signal.
Do you have, just to quantify what you mean by large lumber truck, do you have an idea about how many axles or how large such a truck is? Or, I mean, it's something we can definitely look into, but...
Tractor, you should figure a tractor trailer.
Okay, understood. I know that we have to work with the Suffolk County DPW to make sure that that access is properly designed, so we'll make sure to include that in the discussion as well.
Because would you would you have to amend the signalization to activate when you're coming out of the driveway as well?
It's possible. I know that it is signalized, so and I think that during business hours, it does turn red and green, and then during non-business hours, I think it's just a flashing red light on our side.
Okay.
And but potentially, we would have to change it. But I think that that is something that will come up during the discussion with the DPW.
What business operates out of there currently?
It is Cruz Brothers Construction and a investment company called Unifam, which they're kind of brother slash sister organizations. The Cruz Brothers Construction is a local organization that they're, they do development on the area and construction, but also they work in conjunction with their investment company to buy properties and develop. And they're kind of like a nice up-and-coming construction business that's trying to make a name for themselves out here. So in addition, so there's going to be additional office usage in the office that they haven't kind of said what is going to go in there right now, but at least two of the spaces will be used for Cruz Brothers Construction and Unifam.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak? Yes, please. Give us your name for the record.
John Burnson. Quag Sinclair fuels the immediate neighbor to the east, and I just want to know about this cross-access, if this affects us. And in case you're unaware, our site has two 40,000-gallon underground propane tanks that we don't want people driving in or near. So it's really just a safety concern, and are they planning to encroach in our direction at all?
We'd take that into consideration in terms of mapping it out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm here about another issue, but in hearing this and looking at the site,
Ma'am, your name?
Robin Foreman. I know that on that corner, when the sun is hitting and coming down, there have been many, many, many accidents because of the sudden glare just at that intersection. And you're talking about very large vehicles accessing and coming in and out, and I just want you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Sudden glare at the intersection, okay. Hearing no more comments, we're going to close with a 10-day written comment period motion by George.
Can I borrow you a Zoom?
Is there anyone on Zoom?
No, on Zoom.
No.
Elliot, I'd like to.
Okay.
The next one, Mike.
Yes, I know. George, motion by George, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose extensions? Five in favor.
Thank you.
Two absent, thank you. Okay, the next and last is East Quag Mobile Home Park. Sufficial notice?
Yes, Madam Chair.
We have notes, sufficial notice.
Aye.
We'll read it into the record.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled East Quag Mobile Home Park. I was reading the wrong one just now. The site plan application is for the relocation of the mobile home units, no increase in density, from the property lot number nine, south of the railroad tracks to north of the railroad tracks, onto lot number three, with access from Malloy Drive West, located on two parcels totaling 94.2 acres, located in the central Pine Barrens compatible growth area, and the Aquifer Protection Ugly District at 58 Old Country Road, Hamlet of East Quag, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-289-2-9, and 251-1-3.
Yeah, can can we get a Can you flip it vertically or not?
The word may be vertical.
Yes. John, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. My name is John Bennett, Bennett Reed, 212 Woodmore Lane, Southampton, New York. And with me tonight is Tom Walpert, who's from Young &amp; Young, venerable firm from Riverhead, and Richard Freedman, who's one of the principals, and also Brian Daly, who's an in-house counsel at Mr. Freedman's organization. I'll be relatively brief, because this is a public hearing under a planning board provisions, and the purpose is to have the public have an opportunity to comment, so I'll be quite brief. The what is what is involved here is the exchange of swapping out of 21 manufactured mobile homes in the area south of the railroad tracks, where there are currently 42 homes in this facility, and taking those 21 units larger and making them larger and placing them in a more northerly part of the property. So we'd be swapping out in kind 21 units with newer mobile homes, homes that are more substantial in construction, meet current building health and safety codes. And here's the really significant thing, hooking those 21 units, all 21 of them, to a new IA or innovative wastewater system. There's a Zoning Board of Appeals decision, which this was referred to you for comment, but there is a ZBA decision dated May 19, 2022, which, in addition to noting the environmental benefits of this, including the alternative on-site wastewater treatment system whereby the existing non-conforming septic systems would be abandoned, noted that and came and made a determination that this is not, not an increase in the degree of any sort of nonconformity, because the town has always treated mobile home units, regardless of their size and a fungible nature. So that's a determination that's been made and unchallenged. There have been comments from the engineer, and Mr. Walpert has given an extensive response dated May 16. Unless there are any specific questions about that, there's are things that I don't have any further comments about it. Very straightforward application, vetted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, got a favorable favorable decision. Health Department is very happy that we're going Got a favorable favorable decision. Health department is very happy that we're going to hook these homes up to IA system. And we think net-net from an environmental point of view, from a health, safety and welfare point of view, you're going to have, as a result of the modifications, much more much safer units that are much more in conformance with modern and current safety standards. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Any questions for John, or should we go right to the public hearing? I think we have quite a few people.
Do we see any here left this? If you have one handy.
I'm only seeing a small portion of it. I think it's better if you look at what's on the wall and you see where the units are being transported. See the twenty-one units swapping out from this south area going into the north area. They'll be exchanged in time, but this is a much better illustration of it.
Right, and then there's the the issue of that connector road coming out here. Is that Gleason Road? Down, no, that little the little connector road between, no, go up. That, right there. So that's right above a town owned property.
That's not a road, that's a paper road.
Paper road, right.
It is a road.
It is a road.
It is a road.
So.
Yeah, it's a road under the state code.
Some of the thinking would be to move it down, if possible, into the town owned so that one could put a thirty-foot buffer and just keep it a small road. I discussed this with Claire today.
This is Malloy?
No, that that connect.
We're showing that as only as an emergency access.
Right. Okay.
This is Gleason here.
Yeah.
Well, that stuff will work out.
Will work out on this side line. Okay. So I only have four people here because we didn't have the sign and sheet.
Can we repeat that? Because it sounds it sounds like the people that are sitting in the audience would be very interested to exactly what you're saying that you'll talk about later.
Yeah, the the there's a proposed coming out of the mobile park, an additional access road or egress road, and it's through that where the star is. And that is a paper road. But the thought would be to put a very heavy buffer, like a thirty-foot buffer, backing up to that property, which also has a thirty-foot buffer, so that it would just be a a simple road to come out so that you had a separate exit. And I think of. Yeah, coming out onto yeah, onto Gleason, the lower, just the lower portion with no right-hand turn at all. So that cars could not go north through that existing subdivision. That's what we meant. Okay, so I have only four names. I'll call these. And then whoever else would like to speak will add to the list. So Mark Gregory, I have down here first.
Hi.
Yes, please.
So good evening. My name is Mark Gregory. I'm a resident of Gleason Drive, Sixth Gleason Drive. And I'd just like to point out, most of the homeowners in our neighborhood weren't even notified of this until the last day. And that was because I went around two-thirty homes and dropped letters in mailboxes. I, maybe three or four other people that from our neighborhood, actually received a letter from Bennett explaining what was going on. Being an original homeowner, the entrance that we have on Gleason Drive, that's our entrance. Our homes are being built. The mobile home park was approached about it being a unified entrance. They adamantly opposed us and called us a burden. We had to pay for our own crossing at a cost of three hundred thousand dollars, so ten thousand dollars per homeowner.
Crossing for the?
Yes, ma'am. The Gleason Drive crossing was paid for by every homeowner. So my one of my thoughts is, if this is going to go through, is the East Quag Mobile Home Park going to compensate me my ten thousand dollars plus for the twenty-eight years that I've lived there? We should all be entitled to interest on that money. That's my crossing.
Okay.
Can you provide documentation into the record for that so that we have that on file?
I'm sure we can. All through the Long Island Housing Partnership actually managed our program. We were the original Southampton Town affordable housing program. So I'm sure the town office has has proof of that.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that was one point that I had there about the compensation. The other thing is, this is a private organization and we're bending the rules. Our road hasn't been maintained in probably fifteen years, and that's with thirty homes.
Is that a town road?
That is a town road. The road it road is in decent need of repair. Add on an additional sixty homes. Two cars per household traveling down that road. Think of the wear and tear that's going to be on that road. Gleason Drive has been pointed out before. I'm a fire chief in town, as well as Mr. Bullock. We've had several accidents. It's on a tight turn there. The mobile home park right now is about four hundred to five hundred feet up. Their turning in and out of that park is a little safer than the turns that we make onto Gleason Drive. So I think if you're going to look into this, a traffic study has to be done because as you head east on Old Country Road, if you hit your brakes and you try to make that turn, you've got to wonder about who's coming up behind you. So I definitely think that's a concern.
Good, good suggestion.
The Fire District Secretary gave me this just to give to you. She said she believed that it got in the mail, but that was the recommendation recommendations from the Fire District. They're talking about there's only one fire hydrant right now that serves that area. That's because everything was closed to Old Country Road. If you go back deep into the woods, which now gets closer to the Pine Barrens, the Fire District's recommendation was nine hydrants in that area. Who's paying for these nine hydrants? Like, most of my neighbors here, they didn't have a clue that fire hydrants are taken out of your fire taxes. I have no problem paying fire tax on my neighbors that are contributing to Southampton Towns. This is a private group. East Quag Mobile Home Park is a private group making money off the people that are living there. Why am I paying for their road to be put in? Why am I paying for their fire hydrants and their fire hydrants to be maintained? That's a question that I have. If you go through the East Quag Mobile Home Park, they have speed bumps all over. Southampton Town, we don't allow speed bumps. So obviously, it tells me there's got to be an issue with speed in that area. So now I'm supposed to absolve this problem and the kids that we have, additional traffic coming through. If you're putting in double wides, you're putting in families. Is the East Quag School prepared for the burden that they're going to be undertaking? Has anybody said anything to East Quag School yet about the burden that they're going to be taking? I think before this project goes any further, we really need to think about this. Thank you.
Can you submit your comments to us in writing? Okay, just give them to Jeff. Great, thank you. I have Al Diaz. Al Diaz. Yes, please.
Al Diaz, also a neighbor up in eight Corbett Court. My, I think you've asked most of the questions, but I have one question. The setback from on on the side of Corbett Court, the setback as it relates to the force area that's going to be between the deer fences that we have in our homes and the development that's going to be that is being proposed. We're not sure how much how how much feet, how many feet are there. And my understanding was that originally, when they did that on the on the Gleason side, there was about a fifty-foot setback on that. And I would I would propose that it be considered that the setback be something akin to that on the Corbett side of the situation.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much. Pat Ruger.
Pat Ruger, up to quarter court. Okay, my question was the same thing. I'm an original homeowner. When they first put in the development, it was stated that they had to have a fifty-foot buffer between the homes in the front on Gleason Drive and the mobile home parcel to make a separation between the two. And all of Southampton Town has a lot of natural buffer vegetation. The corner lots are supposed to be common ground. But yet I do not see on this plan any setback that says that there's going to be a fifty-foot natural buffer there. So that is my concern is that if it's been set in pref in 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 the future or in the in the original setback, that there was a fifty-foot buffer. Why are we not having a fifty-foot buffer stated there? It doesn't show any buffer. It just shows some plants, but it doesn't say how many feet and it doesn't look like it's the fifty feet. Because if you look at the Malloy Drive, where they also propose, it looks like an emergency entrance into that development, which means that are they putting a street in there? Or is it just because if you look at that diagram, it says an emergency access. So what kind of emergency access are they putting? Are they is it a paved road? Are they going to take down more trees to put another paved road? And is there a fifty-foot buffer that's going to be behind all the homes that are going down Corbett, which was the same that was given to the front houses? Okay?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Nicholas DeBari.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Nicholas DeBari, eleven Gleason Drive, East Quag. I wanted a homeowner who did not receive the certified letter. I only found out about this meeting about twenty-four hours ago. So I would have liked to prepare more with more documents and stuff, but I was unable to do that. Improvements to the mobile home park, I'm all for it. But I don't like the improvements to affect the homeowners on Gleason and Corbett. One of the proposed improvements is to open up an entrance to the mobile home park utilizing Malloy Drive, which sits between Corbett and Gleason. I'm one of the original homeowners, twenty-eight years. When the development was first being constructed before the road was put in, the mobile home park was approached by the town and the building as to utilize one railroad crossing, using the one that was utilized by the mobile home park. Going back to Gleason on that map, the survey, that road with the star that you were talking about earlier.
Yeah.
I don't know why they're calling it emergency egress. That was the original plan to utilize the mobile home crossing. And then so it would only be one entrance, and then we would come into the left and go up Gleason. So I don't know.
I think the area would be best, yeah.
No, it's not going to show on there.
No.
But that that road, which was on the survey, that road was never developed. So that's the purpose.
The one in the north.
No, no, this one.
This one, the little one, yeah.
All right, where that I can't see from this distance. All right, yes, right there we go. So that was the original proposed layout of the road.
Yeah.
We would enter using.
Oak Street?
Oak Street, make the left, go over to one crossing. That's why that road is there, and then we would come up. The owners of the mobile home park at the time refused that offer. So we were approached saying, we have to go to Plan B. We have to put a new crossing in, and it's going to cost each homeowner ten thousand dollars for the crossing. If we, you know, that's how that's how they got the money to do it from us.
Yeah.
So again, I am opposed to the new entrance on Malloy to enter and exit the mobile home park. I'm thinking maybe there's roughly a hundred homes in the mobile home park. And you add a car or two to each one of those, and that's going to increase our traffic by a hundred cars a day in and out.
Is that Malloy there yet?
That's Malloy there, yes.
So right there, there's a proposed new entrance to utilize. And I'm not sure what they're doing with the two entrances on Old Country Road. They're going to shut them down or do away with them and only make the one entrance off Malloy?
Okay, we're going to find all that out. But that's the history is important.
I speak for all the homeowners. We're all opposed. We don't want the increased traffic.
Yeah.
You know, we've got the the pleasure of few cars going in and out. Don't have to worry about speeding vehicles, you know, kids play on the road. There's a second generation of young kids in new families growing up, and they're going to want to ride their bikes, just like my kids did when they were growing up, and not have to worry about a hundred cars coming in and out.
Okay, thank you.
So I hope that the members of the board deny that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't have any. Who else would like to speak here? Let me get a few names down. Your name?
My name is Toni Peterson. Do I have to stand? Because it's a little tough.
I can bring the mic too.
Oh, no, I have a I have a big map.
It's a recording.
They said the mic doesn't work, they're accurate, but I can just.
It's a recording equipment.
The mic doesn't move.
It doesn't move.
It does. I can move it.
Do you want to come up to the table?
No.
Yeah, well, they have to hear me too.
Can I just unmute the?
Here, I'll help you here. I'll sit on the chair. Oh, good. Timmy, grab that chair. Wow.
Okay, Tony here.
I'll hold it for you.
Okay, so I'm selling my son's home. He was killed and hit and run last year, and his home is on Twenty Cedar Street in the front of the mobile home park. All right, now I'm selling, so just this gentleman. The sale, this is going to depend on whether the sale goes through or not. I don't know if his home is one of them that's supposed to be moved to the back. I'm not getting any answers from Garden Homes. I don't know who's representing Garden Homes here, but I'm not getting an answer. What I am getting it, we don't know what we're going to do. We don't know when it's going to happen. So my question to them was, what happens if you don't want to move your home? Or if your home is too old? His home is twenty-three years old. So is that able to be moved to the back? And what about his neighbors that are directly around him? They're much older mobile homes. Will they be able to be moved to the back? Or are they going to say, no, sorry, they're condemned, or whatever the case may be, which is going to affect the whole area? Secondly, from Garden Homes, which I printed out, if you would like it, says if the owner of the home, this is from Carol Giordano, that's Garden Homes Management. If the owner of the home does not want to move, then it will stay where it is. No tenant will be forced to do anything. So according to what it says here, you're going to move them regardless. And that's not what Garden Homes is telling us. So where do we stand? Is my sale going to fall through? Because they are and who's going to they said they're going to take care of all the expenses of moving these mobile homes. So if they move it and if the home is damaged, are they going to repair it? My son's is a double wide, so they have to split it. Then they have to put it back together.
You're on the lower portion, right?
So he thought my son's home was only the second one in.
Yeah.
So you're talking right there, right, right on fifty and Old Country Road.
Right.
Which means if that's going to be moved back, you're talking it could damage the home.
Yeah.
And they're stating that if it doesn't have to be moved, it doesn't if you want to move it, fine. Are they going to pick up every expense if they damage these homes and the older homes? What's going to happen with them?
What is the name of the Garden Homes management person?
I'll give it to you. You can keep it. Carol Giordano.
C A R Y L.
C A, yeah, C A R Y L.
To you.
You can take them all. This is this is our conversations back and forth, all the questions I've asked. And because everything is everything is contingent upon the answers to these questions. Now, I can't keep this. I have to settle the estate. So I don't know when I'm going to get an answer of this, but we'd like to go to closing. How do we get answers? Are you going to be able to provide us what we we want it to close in July?
Let's see, maybe we can get some information from the applicant.
I I hope so, and you can you can keep all these and. Yeah, I like I said, across from my son's house, there's a very old mobile home on the other side, on both sides. So if they're telling you they don't have to move, how are they going to do what they want to do here if people decide, oh, well, it's too old to move? They can't say, okay, we're going to relocate a house if they can't. And then what are they going to do? Say, well, we'll give you a little bit of money and you can buy a new mobile home to move it to the back?
Yeah, I mean, that's we don't know about that aspect of it.
No, but I mean, Garden Homes should be here answering these questions. These are important questions. Because if they're going to tell you after if your home is more than twenty years old, okay? Which my home, my son's home is twenty-three years old. If they're going to say if they're twenty years old, because apparently banks won't give you a mortgage for anything over twenty years old, which means they're considering it an old mobile home. So if they're saying that, that means they might not move my son's home. Then what do I do to this man who? Then what do I do to this man who just, I just sold it to? And then, here's a home that he can't do what with?
Right. Okay, well, let's see if we can, you can get some answers somehow. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Can you give me your name?
Jim Tuhill.
Jim Tuhill?
No. I live at 3 Corbett Court.
Full-time job now, okay.
And Mark made a good point about coming in to Gleason from the west to the east to make a left and traffic behind you coming, because it's a dip in the road around a blind turn. We're actually, our egress is actually on an S-turn. So, in addition to that, trying to make a left out of the development is very hazardous. Compound it, it seems like the school bus stop is right at the end of the road. So, you have that, you have the cars for the people that are picking up their children from the bus utilizing Gleason at the end, plus, you know, people trying to get in and out. It, it really is a hazard, you know.
Looks like it needs a traffic, traffic study here.
Yes, because it, it's hazardous in both directions. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? Yes, your name please?
My name's Catherine McMunn.
Catherine?
Catherine McMunn.
McMunn.
I'm at 11 Corbett Court. And while it's not, but while someone's already said it, I didn't get any notice of this meeting at all.
Can I, can I just address that for the record? I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, thank you.
But the town code only requires that adjacent property owners receive mailed notice, so that's why the gentleman at 6 Gleason Drive, you received it, your even number neighbors are going to have received it, but those across the street on Gleason and Corbett will not have been required to receive notice.
Okay, although I find that can, I understand, but clearly, the traffic, the way the traffic, and I'm confused, and maybe everybody else understands this, but I don't understand the difference, if you have a road in the front by Gleason, why you also need the road from Malloy? And, and, and not any time did anyone describe why they're changing the entrance and they don't need their railroad crossing? Like, why would they, why would they have to change anything about getting into their park? And why would they have to join our, our neighborhood with their neighborhood? It, it doesn't really make sense to me. I don't really understand. Maybe someone could explain it better? But I agree, children are on the road all the time. We are, we all in the neighborhood focus very well as we drive for that reason. And the concern would be the, the extra traffic, especially by Malloy. It's a blind turn, actually, when you go from Malloy, from Gleason to Corbett and you have to be really careful as you're making that turn around, so I can't, I can imagine it being that much more confusing in the neighborhood if you add more traffic to Malloy. And that would be my biggest concern.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers, please?
James Natale, Gleason Drive. I'm opposed to this program because it's going to create a tremendous amount of car activity between Gleason Drive and Old Country Road. Now, where we intersect with Old Country Road, it's almost like an S curve of the road of Old Country. It's called a chicane. A chicane is two opposing curves that is in the road, okay? So, each road, Old, Old Country Road coming east and coming from the west are straight right until they get to Gleason Drive. Gleason Drive is where that turn is. So, I stood there with my car and counted the seconds from the moment I saw oncoming traffic either east or west.
On Old Country Road.
On Old Country Road. When I saw those cars, I had my watch on me and counted until the time I saw that car to when the time that car was in front of me while I'm standing on Gleason Drive. Three seconds.
Oh, Lord.
Each direction, okay? Now, at this particular time of the year, we have foliage. We have lots of foliage, okay, which diminishes visual.
Visual.
And with the time, it's a little bit better, very little bit better, okay? Now, what happens with that road, because of that turn and because of the dip in the turn, when there used to be a cop on that road for years, which we don't see anymore, handling the speeders, people come speeding down that road because of that curve, because people with fast cars and motorcycles love that turn, because they want to go fast around that turn, all right? UPS flies down that road, FedEx flies down that road, and they don't slow down on that curve until they're in the curve. And the reason why they call it a chicane, because that's the purpose of a chicane. A chicane is to help slow down traffic. But people don't slow down until they're already in the curve of the road. That's why we live in danger on Gleason Drive. The road should be eliminated from Old Country Road, period. There should be some other way to get on to Gleason Drive. Because we fear it for our lives on that corner and we're 28 years senior now, okay? Now, you're going to have a development with young kids learning how to drive. And they're going to come down that road and I fear the day somebody dies on that road, because you know what happens? I'll be thinking about them and about the town board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
My name is Lucas Seedor. I'm a resident of 17 Corbett Court, which is somewhere up here. I'm not an original owner, because I don't own my house and also I would have had to have been born a little bit earlier. But I understand that many of the concerns have already been raised. Just for the record, for the exploratory meetings in the future, just a few of my own thoughts. One, when you look at the map of the entrances into the mobile home park, there are, I believe, four entrances from Old Country Road into the mobile home park. Of course, we at Gleason only have the one. So, I guess the confusion comes not only from the actual use of the connection at Malloy Drive, if that would be a standard connection into the mobile home park or it will be designated for emergency use. I think that is, needs to be clarified to us, to the residents. As well as if it's going to be a normal use, I would assume that there would have to be stop signs put in at Corbett and Gleason, considering now there's going to be cross traffic with Corbett and Gleason. Because now the way it works, when you're driving north or south from Old Country Road, from the end of the development toward, toward Old Country Road, you don't have to worry about cars coming from your left or right when you're crossing Malloy Drive. Just to echo the, the safety concerns with the traffic, I have young nieces and nephews, my grandma, my mother who is sick and not, not well, takes them for walks up and down the development and my main concern is, is their safety with, with extra vehicles coming into, to the development. And it just, just the confusion about the necessity of, of potentially connecting the two neighborhoods. And my concern about connecting the two neighborhoods has nothing to do with the mobile home park or its residents. My entire life of living at Corbett, I've never had an issue with a member, with a resident of the mobile home park. It just is the concern about that they are two separate neighborhoods. As was mentioned before, it seems to be some sort of homeowners association with the, with the mobile home park. They have their own roads and they have speed bumps, they have their own signs. Just the confusion of that they are now, our two neighborhoods are becoming connected when they were never meant to be connected and when they are not the same. So, just, those are my concerns that I believe should be addressed.
Thank you. What was your last name?
Seedor.
Seedor.
S-I-D-O-R.
Anyone else?
I just have one more question.
Come on, come on.
Because the question that I have has to do with the new septic system, okay? I understand that they're trying to upgrade the septic system because the other ones are antiquated and they're not very good and stuff like that. But one of the homes in our development, just recently, because they were adding on, they put the new septic system right on the existing property where the existing home is. So, why is it that the septic system cannot be upgraded in the front? Therefore, not making people move out of their homes, but rather than allowing them to stay where they are and to improve the system itself so that the groundwater is safer and that it is a new system? I don't understand why you would have to pick up all 20 homes, not like that. Why all 20? Why not half of them? Why not only, and then be able to put the septic system up there so that the, the homes that exist have the newer and the more improved septic system? I mean, we are in the Pine Barrens and I, and it is an ecological question. So, that's my thing. And now you're just tearing everything up and you're just going to tear up more trees and more woods and the Pine Barrens itself, which is already ecologically sensitive, and now you're going to do more to it.
Yeah.
So, that's the only question that I have, is maybe we could look into that to see, is there a possibility to leave the residents where they are, or at least most of the residents, so that they don't all have to pick up and move and that the people can sell their own homes to someone else and, and stay there and not be vacated on that, okay?
Thank you.
We have one more.
Okay.
My name's Bruce Gunderson. I live at 9 Corbett Court. A long time ago, we weren't allowed to use Oak Street as a railroad crossing and it cost us a lot of money. And I don't think they should use our street as a railroad crossing in return. Gleason, exiting and entering Gleason is one of the most dangerous places in this town. It's a double-blind curve from both directions. It's a chicane, yes, but, you know, for regular people, it's a double-blind. You can't see the cars coming into that turn from the west and you can't see the cars coming up from the east, either way. So, after living there 28 years, I have to time how fast this car's coming from the left so I can make the left, also watching that the car on the right doesn't come down.
He said three seconds.
Oh, huh?
He timed it, he said it was three seconds.
Three seconds, you see, that's only.
You got three seconds.
Oh, yeah, that's about right.
It's not visual timing that hard.
So, you know, a friend of mine was leaving last week and almost got T-boned. There's been five T-bones there already. You can check that. As well as, it's a 30 mile an hour zone. I don't think I've seen one out of 10 cars going 30, because when I go 40, they're beeping me and passing me on a yellow, double-yellow line, because I'm doing 40. There's a Construction Depot in Quab. That's the shortcut to get to it. There's 47 trucks in there. Landscaping trucks, garbage trucks, all kinds of trucks. There's 47 in there and that's the shortcut. From seven in the morning, no, from six in the morning till about nine in the morning, it's the shortcut from sunrise to Southampton. For three hours, it's 50 miles, 60 miles an hour down that road. You can't get out. And at night, from four to seven, it's 50 miles an hour down that road. These are not people who live locally. They are going to get on the sunrise and the LIE. That's the shortcut road. It has always been a shortcut road. And Gleason was always known as Dead Man's Curve, because three people have died there in the past, longer ago. I have many friends in the trailer park. I love the trailer park. You know, it's not a question of who's rich or who's poor. That's not what this is about. They have five roads that enter that can use their railroad crossing to get into the trailer park. We have one. And they don't want to use theirs, they want to use ours and connect it. All right, I, I'm not even going to say about how much congestion it gives. I'm not saying that topic. But I will say that you can't get through Malloy right now if there's two trucks. It's two cars maybe, if you make a little wide turn, it's an accident. You know, and there's nighttime, there's no lights. And then
Good.
I'm disabled. I want to put it on record that if I drive out of my community, that's allowed to be there and I get injured, I want the town to remember this so that I can claim that the town was responsible as well. And also, from what I studied, behind where they're putting the 21 trailers, they unattract the land straight back behind that. Will there be 20 more trailers added on to that in the future? And 20 more, because the land goes way far back owned by that company behind that? Look at the tract of land and they own the whole thing.
Is that Pine Barrens, though?
It goes all the way to Sunrise.
It's a compatible growth area.
It's compatible, of course.
But it's compatible, right?
So, they own beyond that 20 that they're putting up now, a potential of, I looked at it and I think it's 100, if I, my, you know, it's 20, 20, 20 blocks. They own all straight back. Is that going to be considered here? Then it's hundreds and any more cars you put entering Gleason is a real bad danger because I've learned how to negotiate that through living there. A friend who visited me almost got killed the other day. This is the other day. All the time, it's 50 to 60 miles an hour, three hours a day, two cycles of the day.
Okay, we have it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Russo. I live on 7 Corbett Court. I agree with everybody's, we paid for the railroad crossing. We were not notified of, we all should have been notified of this. Safety, if you look at that map, there's one entrance. If you want to take all those, all the people who live in that trailer park, all the people live in our development and use one entrance, it's not safe. The East Quab School, I'm not sure if this is still how it goes, but when my kids were taking the bus, changed the routes because they would not allow the buses to make a left turn. That's a safety issue. When you're stopped trying to go into the development, you're looking at the cars coming and you're looking behind you because so many times, people almost slam right into you. You add additional tra, you know, traffic, it's just, it's, it's a safety issue. Our roads are, somebody mentioned, they should have been repaired years ago. They look terrible. And then you add all that traffic. It's just, it's, it's not a good idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Greg King. I live at 3 Gleason Drive. Just a, a side note, I put that road in, I worked for the excavator that did the road for the town, and that road you're talking about, that's just beyond the recharge basin. Like Mark said, like others said, we were going to put that in and the trailer park vehemently opposed it. We were going to put it in and put a gate there, because it's common known that the railroad wants to shut one of those crossings. They want to shut the one at the trailer park, because they don't want two side by side. It's long known that they don't like aggregate crossings. That's why further down the big development that Patrick Moye did with Rego, they had to put a bridge.
Right.
That was the reason they did that.
Yeah, yeah, this is driven by that.
Because they would not allow an aggregate crossing and he had all those lots up there and I also did that road also. So, just, you know, from the safety standpoint.
Right, good information.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they were so opposed to it then, but if they want to punch through now, you know, listen, if the railroad shuts their crossing, we're powerless to that, because that's a long on railroad and that's a right-of-way and the railroad can do what they want. But for you guys, I wouldn't impose it. If the road's already there, they use their road and we use our road. So, that's all.
Thank, thank you.
Thanks.
Well, let me get someone who hasn't spoken.
Okay.
Somebody back there? Somebody who hasn't spoken, who wants to?
I think we're good. Never mind, never mind.
Okay, good. John, do you want to?
Yeah, I, usually when there are people at a public hearing, I groan and say, eh, you know, but I'm actually very glad that people here are expressing their view, particularly as it relates to the roads. We didn't propose to come in on Gleason Road. That came out of a staff report and a planning board report. If you don't want us to come in, if the community doesn't want us to come in on Gleason Road and you feel that that's consistent with proper planning, we didn't propose it.
John, can I ask you two questions? We went
Gleason Drive, excuse me, number one, number one. And number two, I can see probably some of the confusion, because the notice talked about access from Malloy Drive West. Nothing's been proposed there but an emergency access. It's a public road. It's the sort of thing that during an emergency event, you might want to have access It's the sort of thing that during an emergency event, you might want to have access there. But again, it, it, this is, this is your script to write. We didn't propose to come in on Gleason. We proposed to use the existing road structures that are for the, for, for the facility. So these are things you have to balance. You have to say to yourself, let's be candid. This is, these are zoning issues, these are political issues. So what you have to do is say to yourself, can we, consistent with planning, decide not to require Gleason because it'll have, you know, perhaps a better effect? Certainly, these people in the public are telling you that, that they don't want to have their, you know, sense of place there disturbed. I understand it, it's very human. If, if you can, consistent with appropriate circulation and planning, say, use the existing road system, we're not going to push it. We didn't propose it.
So John, does, does the road which currently serves the Mobile Home Park have crossing gates and lights?
Yes.
So both roads do?
Yeah, yeah.
And they're right next to each other. Within.
So I mean, I feel like I, I didn't stir up the hornet's nest in terms of roads.
It's not a road. Right now, it's.
I understand. And then in terms, in terms of the, of the Malloy issue, I'll leave that up to you. It's probably some, it's probably not a bad idea to leave it in an un.
It's a catastrophic event, yeah.
Just have some crash gate there or something like that during an emergency requirement to get somebody in there. But again, I, I, we're in your hands.
Okay.
John, if I could ask a quick question? So not having been on the board when this was considered, what's the impetus for moving those units? Is that where the new sanitary system is going to go?
Excuse me?
What, why, why is the?
This is not, there's nowhere near enough room to have, you know, the, the wastewater.
But so that's where the sanitary system is going to go? Where, where those 20, whatever units are, side of the railroad tracks?
Yeah, exactly. Interestingly, the health department, the health department was very, we had proposed a plan to, to hook up more of them, but obviously the zoning board of appeals wanted us to keep the density the same. So the density is not changing.
No, no, I understand. I just didn't understand why you were moving them until somebody mentioned the sanitary system. So that's all. And there's been no overtures really from the railroad to close that, that crossing? Did you aware of?
Not, not aware of.
Okay.
So John, the Garden Homes Management, I mean, the question, we can't answer that question. So I don't know.
That's not a blank answer.
Okay, so thank you very much, everybody who came out.
Anybody on Zoom?
Oh, yes, is there anybody on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
No one on Zoom. Got to leave it open for a 30-day written comment period because some of you didn't get notice. So send us all of your comments, the comments that you made tonight. Put them in writing, get them to us, okay?
Just as a lawyer, I have to, I have to say, when you say people didn't get notice.
No, no.
All who are legally required to get.
Yeah, yeah. So you'll talk to John about that other situation because we don't really know that. It's not our purview.
Well, he's the one I can speak to. He's the one who's supposed to be representing Garden Homes today.
Well, he may know something and he may give you some guidance.
Yeah, it's interesting in terms of the public process. There was a few issues that are outside of our purview and obviously we can refer you. So in terms of Garden Home, you know, John has a connection with them. And then the notice issue, if you feel that additional notice beyond what the code requires is warranted, that's something to bring to the town board so that they could propose a code change. That's your right as a member of the public. But we are operating within the legal bounds that are set already.
So you're lucky you had Mark who went around and gave everybody notice, okay?
And don't forget, you can always canvas your highway department and what repairs to your road.
That's right.
Yes, that, that road needs repair. And clearly, it's, what do you call this S, inverted S?
A chicane.
A chicane.
Yeah, well, you're not going to realign.
They build them on race tracks.
That's not a good situation. Okay, so we're, we're closing with a 30-day written comment period.
And where, where do we send, where do we send?
Send it to the planning board, to the town board, yeah, okay? Thank you very much for coming. Motion for it.
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Dennis, goodbye.
Six in favor, two absent. So that's 30 days and Jeff, the sign-in chief? Motion to adjourn. George? Second by K.
I think you gave me this as clear.
Thank you.